Work. Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there is generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings. We have four items on the work session today. I'll go ahead and turn it over to our county manager, Don Boone. He will give the county manager update. Don.
Thank you, Chair Quayle, members of the board. I'll be pretty brief this morning since it's a seems like an early morning for some of us. We had an election last night. I want to thank our county clerk staff and all of the election workers who worked yesterday and who have actually been working for several weeks now, making sure that we have what we all aspire to, which is a fair, secure and transparent election process. And so we finished counting all of the votes that we received yesterday with a few exceptions, meaning damaged ballots and challenged ballots today. The boards will be meeting again this afternoon to process the ballots that are received due to the action law change that they can be postmarked and still be counted. So the process and the counting continues, but all in all, I just want to give staff all the kudos about a great process. And I just want to remind everybody that this was also a process that came off the heels of a of a county redistricting. And so so it all came off smoothly and thanks to Tracy and her staff. So that's all that I have, Chair Quayle.
Thank you, County Manager, and do pass along our appreciation as well to our county clerk and clerk staff and all of the election workers. Do appreciate their hard work. And again, congratulations to my fellow commissioners, Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Webb. I look forward to working with you in the next four years. We'll move on to the next item, which is the draft amendments to board rules. It's on page three of the agenda. We have thirty minutes assigned to this. And I'll turn it back over to our county manager, Don Boone.
Thank you, Chair Quayle, members of the board. This was one of the items that was in the twenty-one, twenty-two strategic plan, and it's also something that is really kind of a routine ministerial process, which is to look at the board rules on a regular basis and make any adjustments to make sure that they're accurate and reflect, you know, how the board wants to operate. And so staff took a first first cut at the rules and we benefited from having Terry Moore walk through that process with us. And Terry is on the phone or on the on the call both for this item and for for the strategic plan. But fundamentally, what we did was we added a section, which is the preamble to the rules, which just hopefully describes a little bit more for anybody reading the rules about what the role of the board is, how the board is gonna conduct itself and what is the relationship between the board, staff and the public. We then went through the rules and made some other adjustments. Some of it's just clarifying language, but I did want to point to a couple of different sections. One is on page sixteen of the board packet, twelve in in the actual agenda item is Rule two point seven, which talks about rules of order. I did edit this and modified it so that Robert's Rules of Order is a guide for how the board meetings will be conducted and that the county council will be the resource on making sure that the board executes meeting protocols. And so you know, I think that Robert Rules of Orders can, you know, can actually become a stickler in process. And sometimes you want them to be the guide, but not more than that. So that's one change the staff is is recommending on page fourteen. On the section that deals with board memberships and liaison roles, which is Rule three point seven. We did change the language in terms of the board members reports, and it just basically says that the board members will provide updates to the full board regarding matters of significance during a work session or at a regular meeting. And this just gets to the point that as you go through your board assignments is just to be able to share any pertinent information with the rest of the board. We've also spoken at a staff level about other mechanisms we could deploy to help the board. And some of that could be just providing links to all of the organizations that you're serving under, including many, you know, meeting minutes and other correspondence. That way, if any board member or the public was interested, they could they could go to that conduit and find the information. We also updated to to clarify that there's different kinds of meetings as we move forward, and that's the hybrid meeting and then the virtual meeting of the board. And so we just tried to explain what that looks like. And then there's just a number of other clarifying comments and updates, but I would consider most of them to be fairly routine. So we're just presenting this today to see if the board has any concerns or or any comments. And if the board thinks we are closed, then we'll bring this back in a couple of weeks for your approval and consideration, or I should say consideration and hopefully approval. So so that's all I have, Chair.
Thank you, County Manager. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you. Well, kudos to staff for recognizing the significance of this document and for updating it and making it more clear. I think all of the changes proposed are good ones. What we're looking to do is is to give the rules that are flexible and supportive that guide our best performance and staffs. And I think you've done that. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Banks.
My only thoughts is, well, first of all, I think, you know, very good job. But my second thought is maybe potentially thinking to call out decorum by board members a little bit more strongly when we are interacting with our staff. I feel like, you know, staff should be honored for the work that they do. And we should focus on communications in a public forum, not be potentially abrasive to our staff because they deal with enough when when they're just in general, working their jobs. And so my only thought process is to possibly call into this document a little bit more addressing decorum during public meetings.
If I might, Chair Quayle, thank you, Commissioner Banks. And I will look at that. And with the next version, I can draft some language for the board's consideration. There are in different areas, sections that kind of address decorum, but we may be able to highlight those a little bit more and just place a focus on it. I think that, you know, part of what our goal with the rules are is really to say, even though we have different roles, and certainly the board of commissioners has a really unique and important governance role. You know, staff has a role, the public has a role, the county manager has a role, and all these roles some to be the organization that we all serve and the organization that's serving the community. And so I'm always sensitive to have all of us work closely, civilly, professionally, and that we do it as as though we are acknowledging that we are a team. It's when we don't acknowledge that we're a team, then it looks like there's conflict. And really, there's nothing we can't address, but obviously, how we speak to each other matters. So we will take a look at that and see if we can make some adjustments on the language. Thank you.
Yes, good point. Thank you, Commissioner Banks, and thank you, County Manager. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Good to move forward on this. We'll move on to, yeah, thank you, County Manager. We'll move on to the next item, which is Amendment one. And that's the draft to the strategic plan. It's on page forty. We have thirty minutes that are assigned to this. And will I be turning it over to the county manager again to start?
Yes, thank you, Chair Quayle, members of the board. So we're coming back to you today. Obviously, there's been a lot of a lot of distraction over the last several months that's made it this a little bit later in the process than we had anticipated. But we wanted to bring this back to your board, have one more discussion. And as with the board rules, if your board is ready, we'll bring this back in a couple of weeks for formal adoption. I want to thank Amanda, Terry Moore, and really all of staff for their work on this document. We're making a lot of progress, you know, with how we are structured to actually execute annual planning. As you know, having the aspiration for for annual planning and then having all of the resources and all the technical knowledge to actually execute it are two different things. And so we are in that development of of the expertise and some of that muscle memory. And I just want to make sure staff realizes how important that their work is. If you look at at the agenda, there's a lot of good information in here. Some of it is retrospective, some of it's prospective. And the portions that that we would be bringing back to your board really start on page fifty-seven of the agenda document. And those are the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three pri- priorities. Terry Moore is on the phone. I'll let him take over and he will kind of walk us through that portion. So thanks, Terry.
Thank you, Don. Hello, Commissioners. Nice to see you all again. I'm having a little bit of cutout side here. So if I start, if this becomes a problem for you, please let me know. And Amanda could take over for me. I'm going to make this pretty brief and walk you through what you mainly already know. So the Amanda, if you could do the screen share and just take a look at the table of contents there so that we're all looking at the same thing.
Yeah, I think I don't know if maybe Teresa, if you can give me that permission. It looks like I don't have that yet.
Just sent it to you.
Sorry, say that again. Is it? I can I can just go ahead without it. If the board has its agenda, I'll just I'll talk while you're bringing it up. Oh, there we go. So the the revision to the strategic plan, the what we're calling the update, has three parts. A an overview that you're already pretty familiar with on what the components of a strategic plan are, then progress that we made on the first strategic plan. And the third part is priorities for the updated strategic plan. So part one, if you could flip ahead there, Amanda, then is the strategic plan components. And there it's information that you're already pretty familiar with. The main point I want to make on this slide right here is that we start at the top with the with the situation assessment. That was work that we did with for the original plan. That led us to have the information we needed to develop vision, mission, and values. That was in the original plan. We then decided about focus areas. That was in the original plan. And then we came up with some actions for that year. And and all that was part of the original plan. Now we're not as go ahead to the next page, Amanda. As we move forward, then we've got the the vision, mission, and the values. You can go ahead. There we go. Oh, sorry. That's okay. Stay stay where you are. Okay, the vision, mission, and values are are already done. And we talked about that in the fall. The board had an opportunity to revisit those. In general, that is only done at the time when you're doing a major plan update, and that would be about every five years. So the board essentially accepted the vision, mission, and values from the original version of the plan. Similarly, next page, it accepted the focus areas that that plan developed, and these also look familiar to you on governance, infrastructure, economic development, environmental quality, and social services. That plan then had some actions in it that were carried out during the last fiscal year. And that's what part two is about. If you go to the next slide, Amanda. Part two then is giving a progress report on what has been achieved. And here is an example. I won't go through all of these right now. I'm just going to give you the overview. And then if you wanted to discuss any of these, you may. But the what Amanda has done here is lay out very nicely, the, in my opinion, for each focus area, and that's what the heading is, governance is a focus area. What what objective do we have? What tier is that? And what action will we take? And how much was accomplished this year? And what is left to get done? And when is it estimated to be completed? So that's looking backwards and a little bit forward, but that is about the plan, the previous plan that you adopted. So then if you scroll through those, Amanda, the board can see that there are several pages about that on the on the progress that has been made, and that can be part of your discussion if you wish. But I'll finish my overview by saying, having shown you what has been accomplished as background, we then move to this next part, which is part three, which is the priorities for the next year. And some of the priorities from the previous year didn't get accomplished, as you saw. So they will be part of this plan. But in addition, there are some new things. And the way to read this, same five focus areas. And if you look at governance in this example, a one means that this action is a new action. It is tier one. And there are three of them, A, B, and C. A, B, and C have no implication of rank order. They just are a way of classifying that you've got three tier one. Doesn't mean that that A is more important or that will happen sooner. That's still to be determined. You have no tier two actions, and you have one tier three action. And I think you know from the previous plan what the tier means. So that's how these are set up. And if you scroll through, Amanda, you can see that for every one of these, then there are a set of actions. It tells you what tier they are. And and then just to remind you, these are broad action statements. At the when you adopt this plan with whatever amendments you choose to make after discussion, then you will have adopted these actions, but you won't have adopted a detailed work plan by which the actions will be accomplished. That will generally become a staff action to put together a work plan that will talk about who will do what by when and what the intermediate deadlines are and what what subprojects there are within the action areas. And that will go on as you move through the plan over the next year. That that's where this amendment ends. And I'm going to end what I say by just reinforcing two things that Don said. First of all, you are you're very fortunate to have Amanda working with you on this stuff. I mean, I'm talking about this as if I did it, but all of this Amanda put together. And I think, you know, a couple of years ago, it was Don and me trying to hack our way through this. And now you know, Amanda is doing it all and doing a great job. And that's the second point I want to make, that there are very few jurisdictions that are doing this as well as it's being done here. And I, you know, I haven't seen every jurisdiction, but I've seen plenty. And the thing that happens is that either there that none of this gets done because it's not known, or it tries to get done, but then there's not follow through. Or it does get one and done and lasts for a year, but then staff and commission change, and there's no follow through. All of those things are detrimental. Where what you have now is all the hard work is really done. Amanda has put together templates, and you can see how relatively easy it is to get to getting your priorities clarified at the board level, among the board, with staff, with the public. And I think our last meeting, all of us were pleasantly surprised, if not amazed, at how easy it was at that point to have a discussion, let the board interact with each other, get get opinions out and come up with this set of priorities. So you know, my opinion is you're doing a great job and that the document that you have before you is a pretty good reflection of what it is that you wanted to accomplish and very good quality product. And I think it's then back to you for discussion about that. And I'll leave it. I'll take it back to Chair Quayle. Thank you, Terry. Do we have any comments, questions from the board, Commissioner Banks, and then Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Banks?
So this being my first strategic plan that I was able to participate in, I'm very impressed with this process and how basically the cream filtered to the top in regards to it is very apparent that it is not one individual voice that is being shown. It's it is a group of five voices, but we all seem to be on the same page. And I just find that it's impressive. And I appreciate it. I really appreciated this process and in fact, wish that we could work like that more often as commissioners, because it was also a very enjoyable process. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
I echo your comments, Commissioner Banks. Very good process. Commissioner Thompson.
Oh, yeah, sure. I think that's I think that's a very good idea, Commissioner Banks, to the extent that we as a governing body as a team, the county manager's phrase is coordinated muscle movement, which I love. I love sustainable. I love that it has structural integrity. I love that it's visionary and practical. So all of that, kudos, kudos to our consultants, kudos to our staff. Amanda, good job. We can go forward with this. We can talk to each other. We can listen to each other. We can talk to our constituents and our stakeholders. We can listen to each other. Now we have the framework. Now we can continue to build functional, adaptable county government. Wow, hot doggies. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any other comments from our commission? I can't see everybody, so I don't know if Commissioner Webb or Commissioner Toyoaka have anything that they'd like to add at this time? If not, I would just just reaffirm, I agree that it's great to see.
How's the comment?
Oh, okay, Commissioner Toyoaka.
Sorry about that. Trying to get I just again echo the sentiment sentiments as a former military guy, I really appreciate process and structure. And this actually, you know, fulfills all the blocks there. It gives us a structure and it defines processes. And I think the board members can be plug and play, you know, and it would still maintain the integrity of the document. Staff has it arranged so that, you know, there are actionable items that can be processed by staff. And like I said, the the county board, you know, we've put out the, you know, you've approved the process. But again, we can come and go, and it will, the document will sustain. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you, Commissioner Toyoaka. Commissioner Webb, do you have anything you'd like to add? Well, I would just go ahead. Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm having, this is my first phone in and I'm and I apologize for lack of astuteness. No, I I agree. I think this was a great process and that we're all ready to kind of carry on and get to work. Thanks.
Yep. Thank you, Commissioner Webb. And I think we're all unanimous on this. So thanks so much, Terry and Amanda, for for your hard work on this and glad to to see the progress and moving on to the next to the next phase of our strategic plan. Next item is the short term rental data report. It's on page sixty. Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Amanda. Page sixty of our packet. We have thirty minutes that are assigned to this, and I believe I'll be turning it over to our community development director.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Gail Hendrickson, Community Development Director. And I'm here today with a whole team of staff from various departments, including Assessment and Taxation. We have Alicia Sprague, Suzanne Johnson, and Chris Leader. We have Krista Hausneck from who is our GIS manager. We have Joanna Lyons-Antley, our county council, and Monica Steele, our Assistant County Manager. And we'll be trading off parts of the presentation today as we work through the report and the data that you've requested. So we are here because of a request that your board made back on April thirteenth. And at that time, the direction given to staff, as we understood it, was to collect and analyze additional data that would document the impact of short term rentals on housing prices and availability here in Clatsop County. And the question that remains to be answered and where we'll need direction from your board today is in which zones or geographic areas of unincorporated county should short term rentals be allowed? And so in order to address the tasks that you assign to us, again, we met with staff from various departments, and we'll be going through a number of different pieces of information this morning, including the number, the location, the zoning districts where short term rentals are currently allowed. We'll be looking at certified values and residential sales countywide. We'll be looking at market appreciation of residential structures, and we'll also be touching on median household income and rents within unincorporated Clatsop County. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alicia Sprague. She's a tax technician with Assessment and Taxation, and she'll be talking about the actual rental permits themselves.
Good morning. So it was brought, you know, we I am responsible for collecting the transient rent tax for Clatsop County. I handle also a lot of the permits and press jars when they come through. On this slide, you can see that we took the time to take our hundred and seventy-seven permitted STRs and find out in what areas they were primarily in. So as you can see, thirty-eight point four percent of them are in Arch Cape. And then the remaining sixty-one point six percent is in various areas of Clatsop County, Cove Beach, Clatsop Plains, and then the Gear Heart Urban Growth Boundary. The chart to the left shows those different zoning areas also. So the same data just split up into those different zones. And we do have, like I said, a hundred and seventy-seven S permitted STRs, but that makes up less than one percent of all of Clatsop County's housing units per the census that we reviewed. And eighty-four point two percent of those are all allocated along the coastline. We mean the remaining fifteen point eight percent being more inland. We then so we then also reviewed, because there was some question of how often these STRs are actually renting. So I took the time to take our twenty-twenty-one rentals and transient room tax collected and how they reported and reviewed how often they actually reported per account. So this chart here, what it shows is that ten percent of those hundred and seventy-seven rentals actually did not rent at all during twenty-twenty-one. And then six percent of them rented about twenty-five percent of the year, seven percent, about fifty percent of the year, ten percent, seventy-five percent of the year, and then the majority, sixty-seven percent rented all year long. So they reported some kind of rents. And that's about all I have to share today. Thank you. And that's about all I have to share today. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Do we have any questions at this point? Commissioner Thompson?
Just one. This is very interesting data. I don't know that anybody else has done this, so I'm grateful that you've. Taken the time and the skill and the thought to do this. When we say a hundred percent of the year, that interval, it doesn't mean every single. Opportunity where it could be rented. It just means every week or every month or. Tell me, tell me the sample.
Yeah, so what I did is looked on a quarterly basis. So keep in mind, we're reviewing transient room tax data. It's self-reporting four times a year. So it's collected on a quarterly basis. So I took every accountant went, okay, did they report all four quarters? Any kind of amount of rent or did they report only one quarter, two quarters? And that's what I mean by like, if it's twenty five percent of the year, they only rented one quarter. If it's fifty percent, they rented two quarters. How much of that quarter, though, I can't, you know, elaborate on. I only get a total for the quarter. Be helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, I'll turn it back over. Thank you, Alicia. I'll turn it back over to our community development director, Gail.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll be hearing from Krista Hausneck. She is the GIS Cartographic Program Manager. And she has put together several slides that detail the locations throughout the county where the short term rentals are located.
Hello. All right, go ahead and there you go. Thanks. So we, right here, we've got some maps. They're showing the location of the short term rentals. That are in the unincorporated areas of the county. I've color coded the points of the locations by what zoning they're in. Hopefully that would give you guys a little more information about the properties. So on the left there, we've got Arch Cape and we can see that if you look at the legend that there's sixty eight. Of the STRs in the AC dash RCR zoning, which is Arch Cape Rural Community. Residential zoning. And then we've got one outs, just outside of that in the coastal residential. And then the other map over here to the right, Cannon Beach, unincorporated. You can see that there's nine of them that's kind of surrounding outside of Cannon Beach. Go ahead and go to the next one. And we're focusing on Cove Beach as its own map and all seventeen of those short term rentals are in coastal residential. And then in the Hamlet area, there it looks like there's five short term rentals and those are all in residential agriculture area. Over here on the left, we have the Highlands area. Looks like around eight, not around, it is eighteen short term rentals. Over there and in the LC Jewel area, there's only three. For Napa and Swenson, you've got two of them. One of them is in an exclusive farm use. And the others in the Napa Swenson Rural Community Residential area. Lewiston Clark and Only. It's a big geographical area, but there is only eleven. Of the short term rentals in there and they, that has a pretty long list of different zonings that they're in. Seaside, unincorporated, we just have one outside of seaside area. And then Sunset Beach, there's twenty two, I think is what's that, is what that's saying. You can kind of see the pocket there, right? Right at Sunset Beach area. It's kind of interesting to be able to see where little groupings are and everything for these short term rentals. Surf Pines over here, twenty two of them. And then in Warranton, unincorporated, we only have two listed there. And I also wanted to comment that there on, I think, slide three or two, there was a, a map that shows like a heat. Map basically, and I, there you go. Thanks, Gil. I just made that to kind of show where the density of the areas are so you can see really. Obviously, the popular spots along the coast and everything, which we already know, but it's nice to see it visually, I think. I'll pass it to you, Gil.
Thank you, Krista. And were there any questions from the board on any of the maps? All right, so we'll go forward. Next up, we're going to be hearing from Chris Leader. He is the appraisal supervisor and up in Assessment and Taxation, and he will be talking about market values and sale values. Within unincorporated Clatsop County.
All right, thank you, Gil. As Gil said, I'm Chris Leader, appraisal supervisor for Assessment and Taxation. And so I was asked to gather sales and median median values data for the unincorporated areas of Clatsop County where permitted. STRs are located. I'll go over the sales data first. If you can go to the next, there you go, slide fourteen. So I started with Cove, Arch Cape and Cove Beach. This is figure sixteen on page eighty in the agenda packet. I only gathered sales that were arms length transactions. That's, that means, you know, they're typical sales. They're not between family members or distressed sales, so. Arms length transactions. I only gathered sales that were single family residence properties. And they sold from January first of twenty eighteen through mid March of twenty twenty two. Now, the first thing I did, if you look at this, this figure, first thing I did was separate the properties that are STR permitted. From those that are not. And at the top of the figure, you have those that are, they're highlighted in yellow, saying yes for STR. And then those that are not are highlighted in green. The next thing I did was create a column where I can, for the sell price percent above RMV, and that's the column on the far right. And in each group, those that are STR permitted, those that are not, I sorted ascending, lowest to highest. And an interesting pattern evolved here that for those that are STR permitted and those that are not. A similar percentage of property sold below RMV for each one, whether they're permitted or not. And a similar percentage sold above RMV. And as noted in the narrative on page seventy nine of the agenda packet. The average sell price of STR permitted properties was seven hundred and sixty five thousand. With an average RMV of seven hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and seventy nine. The average sell price of non-STR permitted properties was six, six hundred and forty seven thousand, two hundred and ten. With an average RMV of five hundred and sixty five thousand, seven hundred and thirty seven. The narrative on page seventy nine further details how these home price values really aren't considered affordable housing. Another thing that I thought was interesting about this data set, still on figure sixteen. Is that the total median sell price percent above RMV. For those that are STR permitted, it's at the bottom of the column, it's two percent. So that takes the all of that whole range of sell price percent above RMV. Most ties, two percent was the medium above, but those that are not STR permitted. It was eleven percent, so that was higher. I thought that was interesting as well. Any questions about this data set before I move on to the next slide? Okay, if you can go to the next slide, please, Gil. This is figure seventeen on page eighty one, the agenda packet.
All right, Chris.
Yes.
Commissioner Toyoaka had a question.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Thanks for the charts. I mean, I appreciate the data, Chris. In layman's terms, you know, from here, it, it appeared to me as I was reading through this that. The, whether they're short term rental or not, all homes have just gotten universally more expensive. It, you know, and it really was not a factor. Is that what, you know, in your professional opinion? You know, layman's terms?
Yes, there's been, there's been significant appreciation from eighteen to twenty eighteen to twenty twenty one. And figure sixteen shows that, you know, whether they're permitted STR or not. A similar percentage of properties is selling below RMV and above. If you wanted to go on the notion that. If STR permitted are selling higher, you, you might see all of those STR permitted properties. All above RMV, but they're selling similar percentages above and below.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to get it, you know, yeah, I, I appreciate your learned opinion. Just but to put it in common man's terms, that was, I appreciate that.
And Commissioner Banks has a question? Not so much as a question, but as a comment, because I mean, just looking at these housing costs. I feel like our, our housing costs have increased exponentially, but our, you know, workforce. Wage has not increased a lot at, at the same rate. And that's just, that's just an observation. And I'm, I'm wondering if other commissioners can, can see what I'm observing here is that these housing causes have jumped. Considerably, but our workforce, you know, average mean wage in Clatsop County has not. And so, I mean, I, I really feel for folks who are looking for homes right now because this is, this is bleak.
I know it's difficult. I'll jump back into Commissioner Banks. The follow up question I had was of the sales. Did they have the data where the purchases came from? So I talked to some of the real estate organizations association and they said a lot of it is from. People from urban areas purchasing homes in our rural county and, you know, the beach, beachfront's a great attraction. Do we have that data that would support that or deny that?
The data, that data is not in this report. It could be gathered. I mean, it would be opening each individual account and possibly seeing where the mailing address for property tax statements to go to is. There are a lot of out of state buyers, a lot of the very expensive properties above a million dollars. We send out cell questionnaires for every cell that happens. And we ask, you know, did you finance? Just to kind of get an idea whether it was this an arms length transaction. And they'll report if there was just a cash purchase, no financing needed, which we can see by looking in the clerk's records too, if there's a mortgage recorded. And a lot of these large purchases or expensive properties have been for cash purchases, actually, that we have noticed.
I think we've had Commissioner Banks and Commissioner Thompson both. So Commissioner Banks?
Oh, and following this, this thought process, I wonder how much of these. That are in the no STR column are potentially second homes that we just don't have. Like any information on and, you know, I really wonder that. It may not be our STR situation, but it's out of state purchasers or out or, or urban moving rule. That is pricing out our, our local community, even just along the lines of the second home purchase.
This is Commissioner Webb. Can, can you all hear me?
Yes.
The, I would be particularly interested, actually, I was surprised in this report that there wasn't more information about ownership. I've dealt into the, the census data about vacant housing. And which, which was just an outrageous number. And I was really hoping that, that that issue of the ownership of these houses. Would, would be extremely valuable, I think, for us in our deliberations. Is there any way that, that number could be added?
Monica, do you want to comment on that? We were, our, our objection, our objective was to look at the housing prices initially. Monica?
Yeah, I would just comment in regards to the, the vacant housing. We, we don't have the, we don't have a vacant housing inventory and we, we don't have the capacity to. Evaluate each of those, those vacant homes to analyze as to why they are or aren't. I do know towards the end, Gail does have a slide that kind of speaks to what is a vacant house. And, and some of the information includes, you know, it. At the time that the census is conducted, was that house in the process of being vacant? Because somebody had recently moved out and it was still waiting for somebody else to move in. Is it a second home? To Chris's point, you know, we could go in and. We could go in and look at all of these that aren't listed as STRs and see what the mailing address is. But then again, we don't know if they are renting it out for long term purposes or if it is a. Or if it is a second home. So, so there's a lot of unknowns for us to try and collect some of that data. That we, we can't verify. We don't have the capacity to verify.
Oh, I, I think that's, I think that's unfortunate. I do think there are ways to check those out. And I think the, you know, where the address, the prime address of the owner. Certainly should not be difficult to, to figure out. And, you know, the fact is that for, for non-short term rentals. The empty time is usually quite small. With the pressures on our market for, for longer term rentals. So I, I don't, that doesn't seem like rocket science to me. And I think it's, it's one of the biggest questions that, that I certainly have. So the, the, the other question I have is there. We've heard from so many second homeowners who talk about the fact that. That they don't rent out, that various family members come and go, et cetera. That, that I can see as a difficult, as difficult data to verify, but, but otherwise I. I just, I don't know. I'm sorry, I, I just, this is, this is a large number that I'm, would just love to drill down on. Thank you.
I see Commissioner Thompson has a question.
Thank you, sir. Well, here we are looking at data. This isn't anecdotal. This isn't perception. These are data that we're seeing and I appreciate that. Good job, Chris. What we're also dealing with, I think, is the widening wealth gap between rich and poor. So we talk about second home ownership. I have a neighbor who owns five homes around the world. Count them, five. So I don't see the point in looking to. How many days or hours a person is in a particular dwelling? Because that's their right because they own the property to do that. That's how I look at it. What I'm looking at is how to. I want to say cross, cross reference or correlate the data that our staff have gathered. I assume Gail will do this later with the housing study. Because that housing study didn't look at the impact of COVID and, you know, the working out of office remotely. And people who can now come and live here and work here, who weren't able to do that before because they can do it. Over the internet. We're not looking at. At the impact of, for example, ballot measure one ten, which has had an impact on substance abuse. We're not looking at met or unmet mental health needs. We are not looking at, I want to say, community appetite for housing. We're dealing with a variety of changes along a variety of dimensions. These data are valuable, but then which data do we select? In order to do the best possible policy formulation to address. A healthy community's housing needs. That's what I'm looking for. How do we set policies that will support a healthy community's housing needs? Thank you, Minister Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. I see Commissioner Banks and then Commissioner Toyoaka. Commissioner Banks?
I think what we're looking at is what happens in communities when tourism is such a large portion of. The activities on our landscape and this is not the first time. I think that a community that is a tourist destination ends up being priced out of their local homes. Um, we have so many visitors come in, into our community and they realize what an amazing place it is that we live. And then therefore they, they try to relocate or purchase here. Um, and I, I would hesitate to have to dive deeper um, into data for this particular topic that we're addressing, the short-term rentals. I do feel like, uh, doing a little deeper dive for other housing issues that we have coming up on our plate that we will be discussing in the future. But I don't really want to delay the short-term rental, um, decision, waiting for more data. Uh, I, I feel like that we have been given an abundant amount. I think staff has done a great job and I really actually appreciate that staff. Um, is identifying capacity as a limitation because that is a very real thing for a rural county and that's something that we need to remember is that we are a rural county. And so we're, we're not, uh, uh, the size of Portland. We are a rural county and so I am very appreciative to staff for, for identifying that, you know, that might, you know, that might take away from my job doing something that is going to be more productive for our county. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
And Commissioner Twoka?
Thank you. Um, and you know, to Commissioner Thompson's point earlier, you know, we respond to our constituents, you know, the, the members of our community kind of drive this and with a lot of the letters and emails concerned, you know, was that the question was, does the, um, short-term rental drive up the price of housing in our community? And, uh, Chris has provided us the data that, you know, from what we look at says, it's not that, it, it alone does not drive that price. So I think that answers the question that the people, you know, the community has asked in their emails and letters about the impact of short-term rental on pricing. And I think this satisfies that information. So we can maybe put that item to bed and then address the other issues that have come to question from our constituents. And then we can, like, uh, Commissioner Banks said, we can finally settle this issue with putting facts and data into the questions that the community has. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Twoka. Not seeing any other comments at this time, I'll go ahead and turn it back over to our community development director.
Okay, so moving on to, um, slide 15, which is uh, figure 17 on page 81 of the agenda packet. It shows the number of cells in the other areas of incorporated, unincorporated Platte County where there are permitted S T Rs. Um, again, there's only single-family residence properties in this data set and that sold from January 1st, 2018 through mid-March of 2022. Um, I did not include individual cells on this slide or multiple slides because there's a large number of cells, so I just did tallies. But if you looked on the left-hand side, you have the unincorporated area of Astoria, um, Warrenton, Gearheart, Seaside, Cannon Beach. Then you have the permitted separated from those that are not, number of cells. And, um, the, the properties not S T R permitted at similar percentages above and below R and B. Um, there were kind of few cells of S T R. You had eight in Warrenton of that timeframe and eight in Gearheart, but um, and the others minimal. So there's really not enough to see a pattern there like you saw on the prior slide in Arch Cape. Um, there's just more properties that are permitted S T Rs in Arch Cape Cove Beach. Um, of the 730 properties in these unincorporated areas, 19 S T R permitted, 711 not S T R permitted, 82.2% sold above R and B. Um, so if there's any other, unless there's any other questions about this data set for the other areas in, uh, unincorporated Platte County, we'll move on to the median values portion. Okay. So this slide is a figure 18 on page 82 of the agenda packet. Uh, just to give a real quick summary of real market value, which we refer to as R and B. We look to the market for real market value. So we look to the market for estimating land value and structured value. And we come up with the total real market value that's based on the market. Um, we go through the county and we reappraise areas. Right now we're reappraising in Seaside. And when we do that, we look at a bunch of market data, reset the land tables, the tables for buildings and, and that's called a reappraisal area. And then moving forward each year after that, we look at sales that happened throughout the year. And we take those that are arms-length transactions. We compare the sale price to the real market value on the roll and that's how we move values from year to year if we are not reappraising that particular area. So the real market values we get from the market. And it says January 1st of every year, by law, we're, that we're required to develop an opinion of value every year, January 1st. So now on this slide, you also see A V, which stands for assessed value. And that's how, what taxes are based on. Uh, measure 50, which was passed in 97, created what's called maximum assessed value or Mav. And you don't see that on tax statements, but typically it's lower. And the A V, so if R and B is here, real market value is here in a, for a given property and the Mav is here below, the A V is always the lower of the two. So the A V would be that Mav. But if the property has the R and B here and the Mav up here, then that A V is going to be the lower of the two, R and B or Mav. And so that's why you see the A V and these figures here for median values typically lower across the board than R and B. Um, because typically it is lower in that Mav. Um, if it is lower than R and B, one inch up 3% every year. So that's just a quick review of how we determine these values. Uh, but on this slide, again, this is for only single-family residence properties in the unincorporated areas of Platte County. And, um, here we have, um, Arch Cape in the highlighted blue area. And the top portion in red, you see not S T R permitted. As was shown in a zoning slide early on that Alicia showed, um, there are more, there are more homes in the Arch Cape Cove Beach area that have S T R permits. So the overall percentage of single-family residence homes in the areas, it's a higher percent, 79% or 79% are not S T R permitted. 21% are S T R permitted. And you can see the median R and B uh, value and A V values for 2018 and 2021. And you can see the percent change in R and B there. It's a, it's berries per area. You have, in the green highlighted section is unincorporated Cannon Beach. And then below that, I threw in incorporated Cannon Beach just to give an idea of how those values are relative to the, the incorporated area of Cannon Beach. Um, you know, they're in the ballpark there as far as upper-end values. Um, any questions about this slide before I go on to the next slide, which is basically just the same. It shows the median, um, real market value and assessed value of those areas that have permitted S T Rs in the unincorporated county. But this slide here first though has just Arch Cape and unincorporated Cannon Beach. Okay, next slide. This is, uh, figure 19 on page 83. Um, it's like I said, all the other unincorporated areas, single-family properties only. Um, you know, the areas outside of Arch Cape, you got higher percentage of, much higher are not S T R permitted. Um, but also the, this shows the appreciation across these two slides. You know, figures 18 and 19 that's occurred between 2018 and 2021. Uh, the, the appreciation we're, we're noticing during our ratio study right now, which will trend values to 2022. That will be on the next tax statement in October are indicating very significant increases above and above, above what we've seen here in these three, these three years here. So uh, these figures on 18, 19, they show that, um, properties not holding an S T R permit have risen across the county 22 to 33% in the 18 to 21 period. While those that do have an S T R permit have increased in real market value 5 to 42% over that same timeframe. Any questions about this data set? If not, that's, uh, the, the data that I had to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Um, so I'm going to go on and, uh, finish up their presentation this morning. Uh, we're going to talk a little bit about existing housing characteristics and then just briefly about the housing need identified in both the 2019 housing study that the county and the cities did, along with the regional housing needs analysis that was conducted by uh, Oregon Housing and Community Services back in 2021. So, uh, based on information from the American Community Survey, which is produced through the American Census Bureau, we looked at the total number of, uh, units that are in the county and this is 2020 data. Uh, so there were 22,609 total housing units that were identified. The majority of our housing stock consists of single-family detached dwellings, which, and that's 69% of our housing stock. Of those single-family dwellings, uh, just about 61% of them are owner-occupied and the remainder uh, just over 39% are renter-occupied. Just as a little bit of a side note, uh, of those total available units in the housing stock, uh, 2.1% of them are just over 300 units, don't even have complete kitchen facilities. That really has no bearing on today's discussion, but it was a really interesting fact and I just wanted to share that. Um, the housing stock in the county as well, and this is both incorporated and unincorporated, uh, is getting older. So over 58% of the housing stock in the county is more than 50 years old. And there we go. Um, of the, uh, units that are occupied, there are over, just over 16,000 occupied units in the county. And for some reason, my dad is not showing up either. So, uh, of the total number of units in the county, those 22,000, uh, there are this, the excitement. Um, so 22,000 complete units, we have 29% of those units that are considered vacant, uh, by the Census Bureau. And so, uh, based upon the current population survey and housing vacancies and homeowner data ship produced by the U.S. Census Bureau, there are a number of reasons that a, a building may be considered vacant. So it could be a new unit that, um, is not yet occupied by new owners or renters. It could be something that is in transition between, uh, renters or between new owners where the closing may have occurred or the owner has moved out, um, but the new owner has not moved in. This could include units that are in need of repair, so they've been vacated, so people can come in and do, uh, construction work on them. It could be units that are improbate, probate following, uh, uh, someone's, uh, death in a family. Uh, it could be units that are also being, uh, prepared or prepped to be put on the market either for sale or for rent. Uh, some of the vacant housing units are just abandoned structures. Uh, some of them are units where the owners may be, uh, out of the country, out of the state, out of the city for extended periods of time. I know possibly for work reasons where there may be six or seven months somewhere else and their house remains vacant here. Um, and then there's of course, uh, housing units that are temporarily occupied by people who usually live somewhere else. And, uh, of course, we would have short-term rentals, but, um, the data doesn't necessarily specify which category a vacant housing use, unit falls into. It just specifies that it is considered a vacant unit. So the number is large, but there are a variety of reasons. It's not that we have 6,590 short-term rental units in the county. I just want to be very clear about that. Um, so then, um, so we have, we know we have 22,000 units in the
Gail, Commissioner Thompson and then Commissioner Banks each have questions.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you.
Now, that was a compelling statistic. Well, the, I think the issue for me is we see snapshots of data. But it, it doesn't stay static. It's a constantly evolving, constantly shifting set of data points. What's occupied, what's not, and by whom. I mean, we got it that in the, in the previous data about people having multiple residences and I don't know that it's terribly productive to, to develop, um, a moving picture of a multiplicity of data points. Um, are you content that these data that you're giving us are adequate to give us the best picture that you're able to of the housing stock in Platte County? I assume that so, or you, it wouldn't be in front of us, but I just want to confirm that.
That's correct, Commissioner. So the, this is information that's pulled from the 2020 American Community Survey. I did not find this level of detailed information in the 2020, uh, this, the, the sunneal census that has been put out. Uh, so this was the most current information I could have. It's prepared by the Census Bureau. Um, obviously staff doesn't have the capacity to knock on every door every day and say, who are you? Why are you living here? And how long are you going to be here? But, uh, it, it could be, uh, if we ever needed some sort of employment, you know, program where we could just hire people to go out and knock on doors and see what's up in the neighborhoods. Uh, but yes, to answer your question, this was the best available data that I was able to locate.
And then Commissioner Banks?
Well, I guess I just wanted to make note that 6,600 vacant homes in Platte County is kind of a disturbingly high number for me. And the acknowledgement that not all of them are even remotely close to that number in short-term rentals really tells me that we have a different underlying concern than we do in S T Rs. Um, that's just a personal observation that I'm making is that, yeah, granted, I understand that there's multiple reasons why a, a home should be vacant or is vacant. But when we're looking at almost 30% of our homes in Platte County being vacant, um, I, I sense that there is a different issue at play and it's not short-term rentals.
Okay, Gail?
Okay, thank you. All right. So we know countywide, there are just over 22,000 total housing units. We know that of those, um, 22,000, just over 16,000 of them are occupied. And so that means there's about 9,700 that are owner-occupied and then about 6,300 that are renter-occupied. And, uh, according again to the community survey, the five-year estimates, the owner-occupied household median income is just over 71,000. Uh, conversely, if you're a renter-occupied household, your average me, or your median income is about 30,000 less. It's just over 41,000, which is, uh, a significant discrepancy in household income between owner-occupied units and renter-occupied units. Um, couple of other interesting data facts that I couldn't fit in anywhere else, so I'm throwing them in just to throw them in. Um, almost 93% of the households in the county have been living in their units since at least 2018. So people are not necessarily moving around very much and probably part of that might be pandemic, but the, these numbers were likely pulled really before the pandemic became effective. Uh, and then just another fact that you can take for what it is, almost 9% of our occupied housing units do not have a vehicle. And so when we talk about, um, affordable housing and in our future discussions moving forward on different housing-related issues, it's something to think about because we don't want to put, um, uh, affordable housing for people who may not have a vehicle in places where there is no public transit. So that's just, put it, put it in your thinking queue and we'll move on unless there's some questions about this slide. All right, so seeing none. So then I want to talk a little bit about rents. And again, uh, this is coming from data from the 2020 American Community Survey, their five-year estimates. To be affordable, truly affordable housing, housing should, uh, a, a person paying for their housing should not have to spend more than 30% of their gross income, including utilities for their housing. That's what affordable housing is considered to be. And so we remember from our previous slide that the median, say, renter, um, household income is just over 41,000. So if we break that down to 30%, that comes out to just over 12,000 a year and equates to, uh, $1,031 a month per rent, including utilities. That would be truly affordable housing. Uh, when we look at the gross rents on average throughout the county, the median rent is $957. So, and again, this data is 2020. I don't have newer data, um, available. So, uh, obviously with inflation, that is going to change and has changed. Um, but when we look at the number of households that are paying over 30% of their income for rent, uh, you can see of their income for rent, you can see that it's a very significant number. It's it's well over two thousand of our households that are paying rent more than thirty percent and not in an affordable situation. And the reason I wanted to talk about rents is A, we we've talked about how where there are questions have been raised about whether or not short term rentals are increasing rent prices and people can't find places to rent. And I think we're seeing that it's really a function of homeownership where the houses are remaining vacant. That's part of it. But also the houses where we see the most short term rentals are probably the houses that are least affordable to people who are making thirty thousand dollars less than a homeowner might make. So if you're looking at a home and I want to go back to the study here and I believe it is on page, something I can't see. Shoot. My Zoom is blocking. So on page seventy nine of your agenda, we talk a little bit where Chris had pointed out some of the real market values, sale values, and then the assessed values. And so if you were to take a six hundred and forty seven thousand dollar home, that's for sale with a thirty year mortgage, a fixed rate of three point six three three percent, which is probably low at this point. The monthly mortgage payment, not including utilities or anything, would be two thousand three hundred and sixty four dollars. So that's more than twice what thirty percent payment is for the median income renter in the county. So that difference, if you're have a house at that mortgage rate and you want to rent it out long term, you're going to have, you're going to rent for what your mortgage payment is, if not more. So again, we have to really think about are the houses where we're seeing the most number of short term rentals, are those really the areas where we're also overlapping with affordable housing units? And so that's the reason we have this discussion in here. And I'll pause again to see if there's any questions on that.
Commissioner Banks.
Not a question, but I just love the visual because, yeah, it makes a lot of sense. You know, are the SDRs really in areas where the affordable housing would actually be? And it is becoming readily apparent that that I I just really appreciate this work that staff has done on creating something so very easy to disseminate. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. You're very welcome. Alright, so I think we only have a couple more slides and I'll move forward with those. So housing need. We know there's housing need. I don't think anybody disputes that fact. The the table that's up before you right now is from the regional housing needs analysis that was completed in twenty twenty one by the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department at the state level. And they basically broke it down between the five cities in Clatsop County and estimated that in the next twenty years, based on existing deficiencies plus new demand, we would need throughout the five cities, just over three thousand new housing units. And there's a breakdown on the table about what type of units they estimate are needed and for what housing or what household income. So we know there is a need out there. And then the housing study that the county completed in twenty nineteen along with the cities basically said that with with the housing supply, there there are enough units in theory. So we know there's over twenty two thousand units in the county. Our population is just around forty thousand. So you know, in theory, there could be sufficient supply, but what we're missing are the right types of housing. And so that was what the study really focused their strategies on was trying to add that right type of supply. And if we go back to the regional housing needs analysis, you'll see the largest demand is for single family detached housing, which is consistent with what the majority of our housing already is in the county. But there are, there is also the need for manufactured housing, for multifamily housing as well. And I think that's one of the areas where we are probably not seeing enough construction and enough product coming online. So I also did want to point out that this twenty nineteen study has never been formally accepted by the board who was in place at the time or your board. And over the past couple of years, I know the planning commission has put forward some recommendations as well to the board that was in place during those times, and we have not seen any direction from the board at that time to move forward with any of those recommendations. So I think even though the report is a little bit outdated at this point and things have changed considerably with pandemic, I think that there is still a lot of value in some of the strategies and recommendations included in that report. And in the future, as we move on to new housing topics, I certainly would be glad to come back to the board and have a further in-depth discussion about the twenty nineteen housing study and see if there are items that we want to move forward with. Other than that, that concludes our presentation and we thank you and we look forward to hearing your direction.
Thank you, Community Development Director Hendrickson. I see that Commissioner Thompson has a question.
Well, this was in fact a good summation of the various kinds of data. Being conscious of the constraints on on staff time and energy. We've had a three year process to revise the comprehensive land and water use document. We've had a two year process to look at short term rentals. I wonder about staff, staff's capacity now that those large projects are moving toward completion. If our staff could compile a consolidated update, updated set of recommendations to the board to guide us as we're going forward with our planning commission to address these essential community needs. And that's a question, that's a really true question. Does staff have capacity?
If the day ever comes when I don't have to come to a meeting and talk about short term rentals, absolutely, I will be so excited. My staff will be pleased and we are actually very hopeful that we're, by the end of July, we'll have completed our comp plan update process and hopefully will be resolved with short term rentals when we're another soon. So absolutely, Commissioner Thompson.
Commissioner Banks.
You and me both, Director Hendrickson, you and me both. This has been a topic that has been here since I started as a commissioner, so I'm ready to be done. Granted, we have a lot of other housing questions and cares and concerns, but I think that you have given us such a very robust response to the questions that were asked by my fellow commissioners that, you know, I am ready to make a decision. And so I'm putting that out there into the world. I'm ready to make a decision so that our staff and ourselves can move on to other issues that are occurring within our county.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Toyoka.
Yeah, just, I guess to sum up too for myself, that, you know, the constituent correspondence, two main issues was, were number one, is it affect the pricing of the homes, the short term rental affect the pricing of homes? We've had that answered by the Tenny County Tax Assessor's Office saying that that, you know, there's no effect in the pricing of the homes, whether it's a short term rental or not, they're all appreciating, you know, across the board. And then the second major issue from correspondence is available housing, you know, is it chugging up housing taking away from the pool for, you know, workforce or affordable housing, having no short term rentals? And when again, we just heard that it is a different type of home. It is not affecting that pool. And, you know, we're asking the wrong question. We need it for that particular answer. We need to look at a different an area, you know, affordable housing is not in this equation. It's in a different one. So I think those constituent correspondence, those two major questions have been answered. So again, I would be willing, ready to move forward as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Thompson.
Just, just to respond to my colleagues, yeah, I see that what we have is a wealth gap issue. We certainly lack affordable and workforce housing, affordable, available workforce housing. It's a wealth gap and that's, that's it's a different set of issues and a different set of actions. So I am prepared to move forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. And Commissioner Webb. Hi, yeah, I don't see your, I can't hear, hear from Commissioner Webb. I'm prepared to move forward as well. So Commissioner Webb wants to.
Commissioner Webb, if you star six, it may unmute you.
I can't see what number Commissioner Webb is at.
It looks like we just lost her. She was on there with her herself.
Oh, okay.
All we're showing, so.
Okay. Well, we've heard from the majority of the board that we're prepared to move forward.
Okay, and Chair, if I can just ask, so staff has clear direction. You, you are asking staff to move forward with your original direction from February sixteenth and not the recommendation given by the planning commission on March eighth. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson has something.
You know, I I appreciate that clarification. What I saw was that the planning commission itself was almost evenly divided on that recommendation. So given that divergence of opinion on our planning commission, I'm even more willing to go forward. So yes, our original.
Okay, agreed. Commissioner, excuse me, County Manager.
Thank you, Chair Quello, members of the board. And I want to thank all the staff for their information and data. There's been really yeoman's work effort put into this and I really want to recognize that. I think that, you know, you know, staff resources are real and I just, you know, it's, and that's, that's not a bad thing. And I think honestly, having to prioritize where staff resources go is the way that it should be. And so, you know, having your board's participation and making sure we do that is very helpful. I do want to just share too that part of the part of the data gap is to know, you know, what is in the pipeline regarding housing starts and whether they're multifamily, single family. And so the cities and the county are also working, as I know you're aware, on a dashboard that we can put out there so that we can see what is being generated. That information or or the lack of really hinders us in having perspective about the progress that is being made. So again, we are making progress. There's a lot of cooperation going on with the cities and, you know, I think that over time we will see end roads made, but having data is part of that equation. So thank you.
Thank you, County Manager. And again, Gail and your team, thank you so much. Community Development Director Hendrickson, you guys have put on done a tremendous job playing this entire matter or developing all of the information necessary for us to make a decision and move forward. So thank you so much for all your efforts and please pass that around along to the team. And we don't have any other items. So we'll go ahead. If if anybody has anything else for the good of the order, otherwise we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thanks so much. We'll see you.